Welcome to the Madawan Avenue School District Committee of the Hall meeting on October 3rd, 2022. Time is now 6:30 PM. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of into town meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or agreed on. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Avenue Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on June 7th, 2022, in the Atterby Park Plaza and Starlet. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan and the township of Avenue. Madawan Avenue Public Library. This notice is also placed on the district's website. Will you please stand before the committee?
(Inaudible). And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the people of the good we give and bless.
Ms. Case, can we do the roll call?
Ms. Ringer?
Here.
Ms. Idles?
Here.
Ms. Redman?
Here.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Ronton?
Here.
Ms. Town?
Here.
Ms. Osborn?
Present.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
With that, we're going to move to the board president's report. We just have a few updates and reminders since the last meeting. This week is recognized as week of respect for each of the schools. There are various activities that are age-appropriate instruction focusing on preventing, remediating, harassing, continuation, and bullying. We're also excited to announce that the new playground was installed at the Lloyd Road School. And I hope that kids have a ton of fun enjoying it during recess and after school. We encourage our school community to come out and support all of our students that participate in after-school sports and activities. A reminder, our homecoming game is taking place this Saturday, October 8th, at noon at High School. So come out and cheer on the kids. Also, lastly, the Madawan Avenue Education Foundation has an open house this Wednesday at 6:30 PM at the Cambridge School, so here. Make awards grants to teachers in our district to further enrich our children's learning. And with that, we're going to move on to the agenda. So first up, we have curriculum and instruction. Ms. Perez?
Good evening, thank you. Everyone should have received the walk-in item for action. We're recommending the Board of Education approve an opportunity for up to 10 to 12 high school and middle school students to participate in the CJDE Fall Student Conference in 2022 as part of our membership with the Central Jersey Consortium for Excellence and Equity. This will be on October 12th at Monmouth University in West Monmouth. This was previously held each year. The past two years it was virtual, so now it is in person, so we're just in action. Under item A for travel, we're asking for board approval for the following staff members to come and practice at number one. Under item B, other, we're asking for board approval for the submission of the MARS-D2223 Virtual Remote Instructional Plan. This remains required should we need to close as an emergency. The plan was updated to reflect the new procedures and policies in place. That concludes current non-instruction.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Spot on.
One second.
Student Services, Ms. Perez?
Under Student Services for action, under number one, we're asking for board approval for the following students to attend an administrative placement. Under item number two, board approval for the following students for bedside instruction. That concludes Student Services.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
All motion.
Spot on.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Leven?
Thank you, Mr. Leven. Under Personnel, we have two action items. Action item number one, superintendent recommends the board approval of extra responsibility pay as listed. And item number two, appointment of two candidates as listed with set salary. That includes action items. For reading items, this is consideration for the board for the regular action meeting. Would ask the board to approve items A, B, C, 1 through 9, D, 1. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
All motion. One second.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Leven?
Superintendent recommends to the board the approval for first reading of policies as listed. So first reading of policies as listed. Mrs. Sully, I'd like to mention to the board that they get some feedback from board members on capital policies. So what I'll do is I'll push that out to the entire board. I'll highlight the text and move so they can see the changes prior to second reading. About an hour ago, we received from staff assessment updated HIB policy. So we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting. We'd also ask the board if they could consider approving the HIB policy as a single read. But I'll leave the board to also highlight HIB recommendations from staff assessment what the changes were. As you remember, the board had approved and updated HIB policy back in July. All those changes the board had recommended will stay in place. This is a couple of additions that the department had recommended in the current policy. One of those is a particular form that parents and staff members have to fill out when reporting a HIB. We've already been using that form since September 1st. It's already integrated into the HIBs or online pool. But the policy just highlights that particular component. So I'll make sure the board has that. That concludes policy.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Spot on.
All second.
Thank you. Ms. Case, finance?
So we're not looking to take action on any items this evening. However, we'll be looking to take them in the next meeting, and that will be on item 1 for 19.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Spot on.
One second.
Any questions or comments from the board on agenda items?
Hi, I'm Brandon. What I would like to thank and acknowledge that we are reaching different levels of schools for special education as opposed to the private administrative placements. I think it's positive to keep those children who need those specialized administrative placements as close to home as possible so they can make a friend group as well as save usually a substantial amount of money. And as for policy, Mr. Leven, I'm sorry, I will work on getting those unshared from our little private board meeting to directly work in progress. We may have to go ahead and ask you to know so.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez? Thank you. I, Ms. Perez, the walk-in, you said 10 to 12 kids would be attending? And how do, like, how are they selected? Have you guys, is something they sign up for or?
They will sign up at both Miss 1 High School. They do have a team already. They were actually recognized at the last conference.
Oh.
So they have to present some of the community service and projects that we did in school and outside of school. So it's usually the class that will be attending.
And only one thing, the HIB policy, so we have a new policy come down. This is the same new policy, just added to it, a few things were added to it?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you as well for updating the virtual remote instructional plan. It was very thorough, which I thought was great. I know it's just for emergency purposes, we're told we need to, but I did think it was really thorough, so thank you.
Here, Mr. Leven.
Again, also about the virtual plan, I did want to acknowledge that this is a state requirement. And this is not, all criticism of our local administration did do, it's been a strong effort to provide a comprehensive plan with detailed services. And it's a very good document. Did want to note that with everything that we have learned about the weakness of virtual instruction, I don't personally agree that should be considered an option to satisfy our mandate to provide 180 days of education. But again, I recognize that this is a state requirement and that this plan doesn't fulfill that requirement.
Thank you. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the venue for graduation. That is, I know it says work still right now, but that is essentially a backup plan.
Yes.
It's strictly about the plan we expect to keep at that time of school.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to, anyone else have questions or comments?
No?
Okay, then we're going to move to public comments on agenda items as well as additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality for instance. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president. An open consent may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in this little matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to cycle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or evasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of legal ramifications to their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their home medical advice.
Okay.
Anyone? Yep?
I didn't know I was going to have a microphone. This is good. Hi, my name is Richard Russo. I live on Courtland Lane. I've been there for quite a few years. Over the years, the board that, maybe not this group, but the board that has created a bus depot. I call it a bus depot because you have 30 buses that are active seven days a week. You put this in a residential area, you put this in back of our homes, in our backyards, and you put this on the border of the wetlands. It doesn't make sense to me, but maybe we can come to some kind of agreement there. We were told by two sources that the buses were going to leak. Obviously, it didn't happen. Maybe you can, you know, give us some kind of heads up.
We have gone out to bid on three properties in the last six months. Our, we did not get the bids. We're working with both townships right now. I did, I said our goal is to move people, move the buses out of here. And that is exactly what it is. We have bid on three properties, one of which we were very close. There were some environmental issues with the property that we had to back out of. But as I've said, I've given you my word that our, we want the buses out of here as well. So we're working closely with both towns. And I hope, I'm an optimist, I hope to have it resolved by the end of the school year. If not sooner.
Yeah, I mean, that would alleviate traffic.
It would alleviate numerous, numerous issues. So, you know, I, you know, I apologize with the bids they didn't go through for us.
They were not out of reach? The bids were not out of reach?
While when you're outbid by five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand and more public entity, we have, I have to keep a balanced budget unlike the state and other entities. So, but you have my word that that's exactly what we're looking for. And Lindsay, the V A, and I have also gone to about eight or nine properties that did not, didn't meet what we needed to fit all of it out. Because I'm not, I'm not going to pull six buses out one month and then another set. We would like to be out of there by the end of the school year. And I would have liked to have been out of there by the end of the school year the last four years. But, and I've spoken to some people here for the eight years that I've been here. And it has not been for a lack of effort. And I'm hopeful that by the end of the school year, or sooner, the buses will be out.
What are you looking for? Are they going to have to build some?
I think Lindsay could, it's a little bit more than that. And we need a building as well because we also have transportation staff there. There needs to be a building associated with it.
Would the board event be moving to that location also?
No, the board event is moving November.
The old funeral?
November 15th or thereabouts, yes.
There's so many issues with that building now, but it's going to be done with that?
I don't know what issues you're.
I don't want to name names, but I was told.
What are, I can answer all of your questions.
I don't know the issues. I was talking to the mayor, and he was telling me. But he didn't specify.
Well, where she processed it up next week, furniture's been ordered.
That would, that would solve some of the cars?
Absolutely, that would.
Right now, we have the parents, the moms and dads dropping their kids off, they get them up. We have the teachers, we have the board of ed, and we also have the buses and the bus drivers. It's getting crazy.
So central is going to be out of here. Maintenance is going to be moved out of here as well as transportation.
Okay, right. Okay. What's the radius that you're looking for? You said two towns, what, aside from Aberdeen?
We've looked in Old Bridge on 34. We, Key Court, we looked at, we're looking everywhere that a commercial property comes up, we've been to visit.
I know it's not easy.
It has not been easy. I wish it was. I wish I could tell you right now, we're out of here tomorrow. But it is not for lack of effort, and we're not going to stop until we get this accomplished.
True, true. One other thing, not a major thing, but again, I talk to Fred a lot. And for a while, the gates were being locked in the back of our home after school hours. I think that, I guess it was maintenance that was locking them, I don't know, 6, 7 o'clock?
Yes.
And then opening up in the morning, and on weekends, I, we really don't see a reason for the gates to have to be, they're always locked. We're thinking of our safety for the, these are the backyards of our home. And if cars, teenagers, whatever the case may be, park back there, they drink, they could, I'm thinking of the worst scenarios, they could rob one of us. Is that possible?
So I, literally Fred sent me an email this morning. To my knowledge, it was being locked every weekend. Now that I'm aware of it, I will be leaving the people I need to meet with in the morning. So it gets locked every night and on the weekends.
True. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Michael, 51, Chicago. About a year or so ago, I met, my wife and I met with the superintendent about exit roads that you folks use. And we pointed out how much disarray that whole area is. And I believe that that belonged to the school board and not to the municipality, if I'm not mistaken.
It's about half and half towards the end there?
Well, the half, the half that belonged to you folks should be cleaned up because it's horrible. There are trees that are half fallen down. The pathway from the Indian Chilton Lane to the Lloyd Road School is in total disarray. There's significant poisoning, and the conduits are overstuffed. And they have to be cleaned, otherwise you're going to have problems in the wintertime.
And we cleaned the conduits last summer. They do need to be cleaned out again. But the trees someone had brought up in wetlands, we can't touch one tree down there without going through a process.
They're all, it's all wetlands? Are you sure?
Yes. What I've been told from the town is all wet, protected.
Well, I was checking in because I was on the planning board, and I'm not sure that that would be.
Okay.
I was on the planning board, why? Besides. Another thing I'd like to point out that many of the people that use the back parking lot park illegally. They park in the areas that are striped, which they should get tickets for. And the only reason I know that is I ride my bicycle back there. And they park there, and they'll park in areas that shouldn't be parking. That should be more enforced by the superintendent or whomever is in charge of that parking lot. They're not parked promptly, and it's dangerous if there were a fire. There's a reason they're fires on us, and that should be adhered to. I want to point that out to the board. Additionally, with the price of gas as it is, you should inform your drivers that they should shut their buses off instead of letting them idle for 15 to 20 minutes. That's money out of everyone's pocket that we're paying for gasoline or diesel that we shouldn't be paying for. They should shut them off. I realize that they may be waiting to go out, and I understand that. But I drove by there today, not more than a week ago, and there are people that are in their buses, and the bus was running. And I went by it three or four times, and I'll be darned if it wasn't continually running. We're wasting taxpayer money, and that's not right. Not right for any of us, okay? I realize, one other thing, that there are issues with people dropping students off at the school, okay? But, and the police, and it's an effort that has to be made coordinated between the school board and the Aberdeen Police Department. They've done their part by putting those signs in because those, before those signs were put in, I rode my bike, and I could have gotten pilled because you couldn't get a car through. And today, when I, when I had to go someplace, they're wrapped all around Cortland, and they're parked on that corner of Cortland and Handfield. Someone's going to get hurt, okay? I don't know what the solution is, whether or not there could be a timing thing with people coming in. I'm not sure what the problem is. I mean, just so you understand, I also brought up the fact that when people come down the exit and go onto Chilton, the sight line, and I'm going to go, I'm going to be going to council on Thursday, the township council, because I pointed out to them about the sight line when you come down Cortland, you can't see because of the shrubbery that's on that one person's property. That's not your problem. That's the township issue. But I just thought it'd be important that you people should know about all these things. And you have to, one of the things, I just to go back, you can't just clean the conduit once a year. Because when it rains, they fill up because they're not pitched properly or appears not to be pitched properly. And also that roadway is buckling. And I'm not sure what you're planning on doing. Hopefully, when you move the buses, that roadway still needs improvement. And I haven't seen any, one little thing was done when I mentioned to the superintendent over you. But something has to be done. You've got to keep that area approved. Thank you. They're all yours.
Hello, Susan Shaw, AV, Cortland Lane. I met with Mr. Mike almost exactly a year ago on October 8th about all these same things that I was wondering about with the traffic and the cars parked. And like Mr. Avan said, like on Cortland, I know the police have put up the signs, but still, you know, back then, it was only skinny little route going up between parents parking on both sides. But now it's essentially still the same thing because I don't know if what you're doing different, if you're letting parents pull in and drop off, but there's a line of traffic all to the right side. There are no cars, but they're not moving. And it's, you know, runs all the way down to Cortland and then turns off to Carol Lane. So, you know, if there's ever an emergency and ambulance has to get up the street, it's going to be a big problem. And I have called the police department and told them about that. But, so, you know, back when we met, you said that the whole bus yard was, you know, I said, what if that doesn't take place? And you said, oh, no, it's absolutely, it's a done deal. And you gave me dates when the board would be out of here, and you gave me dates when buses would be out, which was last June for buses, and the board was supposed to be prior to that, and that didn't happen.
They said September for the board, so we're two months behind on that.
And last June for buses.
You're right.
Until, so now I heard what you had to say. But what can we do to, to better the situation still? Because we can't even get out of our drive booths. Like people in our neighborhood are trying to go to work, and it's still this skinny little and around the corner, you have parents opening their doors into the roadway to put their kids in the car seats. The ones that are still parking out there.
So I'm, I'm weekly, almost with the chief, to discuss these things. So from the first day of school until now, the first three days of school here, it took approximately 13 minutes to get everybody in. We have it down to five as of today. From the minute at 9:05, when those doors opened for pre-k, we're 9:14 at the, at the most. And I've been out there every morning in the parking lot with my timer. So I've been speaking with.
Are you out in the parking lot?
I'm in this park, inside this parking lot. The police are out towards the front.
The police are very rarely out in towards Cortland.
Well, they're not, they're in the driveway, the driveway, because I see Officer Griffith there every morning when I go out there. So I'll put Officer Griffith further out in, so he can see this. But we've gotten it down, like I said, in the two, three weeks we've been open. We've managed to cut that time in half. And I would imagine, once the bus yard is out, once we're out of here next month, that's also going to alleviate the time.
The board will be out of here?
Like November 15th is our, is our moving date for, you know, 34.
And is that, so that essentially will open up parking spaces for parents?
Well, we've got 40 central office personnel at any given moment here. And then when the bus drivers out of here, that's another 50 spots. So absolutely, yes.
Okay. Another thing, I wanted to grant, but you were saying that you can't take down any trees. And, you know, over the last few years, you guys have taken every tree down behind my fence to put in your, have backhoe right up against my fence.
Drained, yes, because they were drained.
Yes. No notification to us. I had to call the town and see what the heck was going on. So now essentially, we have a full view of, and your road's a lot higher than our backyard. So buses parked alongside of the building, you hear beeping all day, all night, all weekend, all summer. You know, from whatever programs are going on. Football games, summer camp, summer school.
Beeping here?
Yeah, the buses beeping, you know, pulling in and out, in and out.
The backup bees.
Car alarm zone, bus drivers screaming across the parking lot at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning having conversations. They sound like they're in your living room, you know, and that's a problem. Your staff, probably your bus drivers, because I drive my son to high school, just never drive a speed limit. I'm just trying to pull in our driveway, and they're up back of my car. And then I watch, they pull in here. I actually followed one one time, and I said, do you know what the speed limit is, like in the residential area?
I can say that every time the speed limit has been brought to our attention, it's been addressed, tickets have been handed out. So if it's happening again, I would ask that you reach out to me, and I'll have the police writing tickets.
Okay. But I have two, two letters here from other residents to ask some concerns. I don't know if you want to read them?
If you'd like.
Or, and I'll give them to you as well?
Absolutely.
So this is from Michael and Caitlin Alvarez at 92 Cortland Lane. Members of the board, we are Caitlin and Michael Alvarez, six-year residents of 92 Cortland Lane. Our backyard is directly in front of the bus depot behind Cambridge Park preschool. We could not be happier that the preschool program has expanded. I want to add about that too. Has expanded in the district, and we are thankful that both our children have participated in the program. Now that Cambridge Park has reached its full capacity, however, our concern has grown for the youngest students in town. The traffic to drop off and pick up from the preschool has exponentially grown this year to the point where cars are coming quickly around the curve on Cortland Lane towards the school have had to slam on brakes in order to stop in time to avoid accident. Further issues arise due to the heavy parking on Cortland creating blind spots and increased risk of vehicle damage or even worse pedestrian being struck. As residents with the preschool and bus depot right over our back fence, we have dealt with inconveniences since moving in. But the sounds and disturbances in this first month of the school year have been worse than ever before. Loud buses are starting up as early as 6:00 AM and even earlier in colder months in an effort to warm them up. The sound of reversing vehicle, the scraping of the gate against the road, beeps of drivers' personal vehicles having all without, personal vehicles have all without fail awoken my young daughter every September until she gets used to sleeping through the noise. Drivers consistently yelling "good morning" to each other and sneaking loudly on their phones can be heard through our house. We are hesitant to let our dogs out into the backyard just so early as loud conversations cause on the bark, and we do not want to add the disturbances of our neighbors. The spotlight outside of door 25 in the back of the school is on 24/7 and has caused us to buy blackout shades for our daughter's room that overlooks the back door. If these noises aren't enough to feel like our property was at risk, last year's pruning of the greenery on the other side of our fence have literally taken away any blockage to this view. Not to mention that during this cleanup, they've ruined our fence and have not fixed it. As I write this letter just before 2:00 on Friday afternoon, I look out my office window to see three buses that have been idling, beeping, reversing for over 20 minutes. It sounds like a construction site. For the safety of our walking students and for the. For the safety of our walking students and for the peace of our own backdoors, please consider moving the bus depot to one of the many vacant lots in town. That prime real estate can be used for proper parking lot for the preschool, and the residents will not feel as infringed upon at all hours of the day. We apologize that we cannot make this meeting in person, but we welcome any further inquiries as you need as our backyard at ninety-two Portland, in particular, is one of the most affected by noisy, unsafe, and ridiculous bus depot drive that's on our home. Sincerely, Michael and Caitlin Alvarez. So, that's them. Um, also, the preschool here. Like, I mean, I've lived here my whole life. My parents are original owners, and this, I went to school here when it was K through five. So, but the school was meant for certain sections. So, I might understand that, that preschool here houses all of Aberdeen, Madawan, Cliffwood now?
No, we have pre-K in every building.
Okay. But right now, you don't have any kids from Cliffwood or all of the different...
I, I can't go in, if this student has...
I know, I realize you have disability.
So, the answer is, there could be, possibly, but we have pre-K in every building to keep those students with their peers.
And is, is it my understanding that you're gonna be expanding on this school?
Expanding?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be up to five hundred pre-K students next year, because that's the universe that we have in town.
How many students do you have here currently?
We have, in our pre-K program, about three hundred and seventy, total about a hundred and twelve here.
A hundred and twelve here?
Yes.
And next, you're gonna have five hundred here?
No.
Oh, no, no.
Totally, there's, here, probably one fifty, one sixty.
So, you don't plan on expanding in any way?
Yep, we are. We're, we're gonna be going from three fifty to five hundred, some of those students.
I mean, in this building?
Yes, we are. We are, yes. No, no, not the building, no, no, no.
Building, still.
Yes, the existing structure.
But you're gonna have up to five hundred students in this school?
No, in the district, pretty much, yes.
So, how many more are you gonna have here next year?
Between fifty and seventy, somewhere in there.
Still, still it's gonna be fifty more people potentially having to...
Children that move to the district, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Um, I have one more letter.
Yep, absolutely.
To the board, my name is Marilyn Bauer of sixteen Carol Lane. I've watched every one of these houses built in nineteen sixty-three. Originally, every stratum or section was designated a parkland for children to enjoy. After, after we moved in, we found out that Levitt and the formal, formerly Madawan Township had taken our park and changed it to build a school. Of course, we took them to court, but as you see, you have a problem now. People are parking up and down Portland Lane. Buses don't need to be parked there. They weren't there when my kids went to school. A simple problem could be remedied if you park the buses somewhere else and move the Board of Ed, so parents and, parents can park where they should be, in front of the school. Hopefully, things can be changed for the, for the future. Some residents have had their homes, their home sales canceled because of the buses. And, and I actually have to agree that anytime somebody's house goes for sale up next to me, all their potential buyers come knocking on my door asking about the bus yard. Because it's, we can't enjoy our yards. It's just ridiculous. And now that they've taken all the trees away, it's just, you know, you guys don't care, because you don't live, none of yous live in the C-section. But that's what we listen to all day, because times are scattered, so it's constantly going, right? They're constantly coming in and out. And then we listen to it at night. Could be eleven o'clock at night, could be twelve o'clock at night. It could be a Saturday night at twelve o'clock at night, and they do run the buses for a long time. I've called, like, you weren't the superintendent, but I've called, like, eight, ten years ago, and their excuse was, oh, well, you know, we just got back from the tournament. We have to check the buses. I'm like, does it take forty minutes to find a high schooler inside the bus? I mean, that's what they're saying. They're looking for kids inside of the bus, but they're high schoolers, you know? But there's really no reason that the buses should be idling for that long.
Yeah, I think as Dr. Micah said, we are looking to move the bus yard out of here as quickly as possible. We've been dealing with the towns, realtors, like, we are trying. Some of the prices have been a lot higher than, you know, we, we're responsible for tax dollars, so we need to also watch that, too. Um, but we have the bids out, and we are trying to move it out of here as fast as we can. I mean, we're constantly looking.
One summer, one of the superintendents did us a favor by actually parking buses in the high school parking lot, so we could enjoy our yards for the summer. And that was probably the best, the most peaceful summer we've ever been able to enjoy our yards in twenty-six years. So, is that ever a possibility? Would you give us some breaks on the weekends? Or is it a matter of, you know?
I'm hoping that we're gonna be out of here long, or our intention is to get out of here as soon as possible. Unfortunately, I have to cross that bridge in July or August, and absolutely, we actually need to be on the table.
One other thing, and I'll be done, is, have you ever considered getting rid of your buses and contracting out like they did in the past before we had to? Because it doesn't seem like you have enough buses to cover your kids as...
We, we actually do.
You do now?
Yes, um, and, um, there is a tremendous shortage. If we were to go with third parties, we wouldn't be able to transport our children, because there are, there are no bus drivers to be found right then. So, there's, we, we are, we've done an excellent job of retaining what we have. However, um, the, the, the job applicant pool is not there to, to be able to go to third parties and rely on them to transport our children.
Thank you.
Mrs. Walling, I have a question. Dr. Mike, I just wanna verify that November fifteenth date is pending a lot of things.
We have, yes, but...
I mean, you know, as far as, you know, how moving things, you know, it's not set in stone yet.
No, well, it's a date we've been given.
Of course, but I, I, you know, there's, there could always be something that comes up in any closing type of situation.
Yes, however, it is, it's well on its way. Again, it's where we need to be, yes.
Thanks. Any other public comments?
Oh, sure. Yep.
Okay, seeing no additional public comments, we're going to take action on agenda items, curriculum and instruction A and B, student service, including the walk-in item, student services one and two, personnel one and two, and policy first reading. Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Island?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yep.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Montal?
Yes.
Ms. Fash?
Yes.
Ms. Ozark?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Any old business? So, then, um, new business? Ms. Odom?
Um, I understand your frustration with the bus yard. Um, I think it's unfair to say that we don't care, because we know we're leading the herd. I live in the foot section of Aberdeen, and we have the garbage trucks. And we here, the garbage trucks island, and they work for our roads. Um, we have our speed limit chain on our roads, but we don't have the speed bumps on our roads. So, everyone has issues in different areas that, um, affect all of us. So, I feel like it affects all of us, even though it is in your backyard, it still, it still affects us. Because we wanna make a solution, and we're trying to make a better solution to move the buses out of here. Um, our new V A has been scouring different towns and exhausting all options, and trying to push the cap above where you're comfortable paying for these bus yards and these, uh, commercial properties. And just like home properties, commercial properties have risen too. Um, the inflation is not just for homes and cars, it's for all properties. So, I just want to understand that Dr. Micah is a man of his word, and he is trying. So, um, if he states that we're trying to do these things and fix it, he's not just sitting on his hands and just saying things to you guys. Like I said, I understand the frustration, uh, the cleanup, the, um, the yards and things like that, but he is a man of his word, and he is trying to make sure that we work together, not just as a district, but as a community, to make these things better for your people. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna move to executive session. Do you resolve that for the session we convene for the purposes of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters? The subject matter of this discussion will be disclosed to the public unless reason for complicity exists. Although the board can not guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be thirty minutes, after which the public may report, and shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will not take place. Can I get a motion in a second to enter executive session?
So, hold.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.